So it's six o'clock, so I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order, uh, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Roll call?
Mick Knight?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Roha?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Kinder?
Here. All right, um, first things first, uh, both of office have a motion to concur with the city manager's appointment of Timothy Fuller, full-time police patrolman.
So move.
Second? Discussion? Roll call? Do you wanna? Oh, oh, discussion. Timothy?
So, this Timothy Fuller, he comes to us from Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission where he was a waterways conservation officer. Prior to that, he worked for Pendoc. He's been a lifelong resident of the area. He graduated from Meadville, two thousand seven. Two thousand seven. So he will be the newest addition to our police department. Nice to meet everybody.
Okay. Roll call first, right? Mick Knight?
Hi.
Myers?
Hi.
Roha?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Kinder?
Hi.
Can you sign? Yes, I'm sorry? Yep, yep, hold on one second. Okay, so we'll do the office. Timothy, this is for you. And she gave me two, because last time there was.
Timothy, is your family here? They could come in.
Yeah, absolutely, come in.
Timothy's family, come on in.
There's plenty of room for everybody to come in if you guys wanna come in and watch. There's. Yeah, especially your family. Anybody wanna witness? So we're gonna raise your hand. You repeat after me.
Okay.
I, Timothy Fuller.
I, Timothy Fuller.
solemnly swear and affirm.
Solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
I don't know, thank you, Timothy.
Thank you. Right now.
Right today.
Someday I want to hear your story of returning home and getting brought in.
Okay, all right.
Floor, Richard, you're back.
All right.
Floor, Richard, yeah. Give a speech.
Speech, speech, speech.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We're gonna go with, uh, public comment on agenda items. Okay, we're gonna start with Dan Walk.
You both comment.
Okay, together, I just wasn't sure if there was a Dan Walk or something.
All right, we realize two of us up here, public comment isn't the norm, but we're speaking in solidarity for thousands of people in this city. We're both renters and we are speaking on behalf of a local grassroots organization called Crawford County United. Over the past few months, more than a dozen volunteers knocked on the door of nearly every renter in the city of Meadville, plus doors of quite a few homeowners too. We knocked doors to gather support for the rental registry and inspection program. The result, we collected more than one thousand signatures, and in our hands are these one thousand signatures, which represent nearly, or roughly, ten thousand, or excuse me, roughly ten percent of the city's population. This is how we worded the petition, and I quote, "We are, we, the undersigned, support the creation of a rental inspection program to ensure basic safety standards for all rental housing in Meadville. It's time for the city to catch up with neighboring cities like Titusville, Sagertown, Erie, and Greenville and establish a program to protect the safety of its residents and maintain the quality of rental housing in the city." And I end quote. An overwhelming majority of Meadville residents we spoke to are in favor of this program because of its focus on providing safe housing conditions for renters. Many people were surprised to find out that Meadville doesn't already have a program like this in place. Many of the people we talked to could see the benefit for the program because they were dealing with a number of safety issues. For example, numerous people talked to us about their homes showing large holes, and whether it be in the ceiling or the walls or the floor. One woman told us about the landlord ripping up the carpet, but the landlord left all the staples in, so her kids kept stepping on the staples. One couple who lived on the first floor of a multi-floor home had water coming through the ceiling and into the living room. They called the landlord numerous times to fix the flooding. Once the landlord finally came, the landlord dropped off the ceiling tile and told them they had to fix it. The husband of this couple is disabled and he could not climb any stairs, yet he had to climb a ladder to replace that ceiling tile. In doing so, he found exposed electrical wiring and discovered the water had been pouring onto the electrical wiring for a period of time. There's a house on a street corner that was recently run into by a car. This knocked one of the foundation blocks out. The woman who was living there told the landlord, and the landlord said she wanted to have the foundation put back in place, she had to do it herself. There's also a woman who told us she contracted pneumonia after her landlord would not fix her heat in her home during the winter. It's important to address one particular issue we encountered, and that was the fear of retaliation. While we had hundreds of renters willing to sign the petition, virtually none of them felt comfortable coming to city council to speak publicly. The main reason for this is fear. They're scared of what their landlord will do in retaliation. And that fear is justified. As you might be aware, there was a renter who spoke here in September about unsafe conditions in her apartment. After coming to council to speak and requesting an inspection by the fire department, which found multiple safety violations, that renter was threatened with eviction. We know retaliation happens when renters speak up, which is why we need this program.
We are strongly in favor. We are strongly in favor of this program for a number of reasons, but most importantly, we want all of our neighbors and residents to live in safe housing. And we know that that is not the case right now. This program is also an important policy for communities who want to be proactive about supporting their housing stock. In other communities that have implemented programs like this, they have seen a decrease in housing owned by absentee landlords, which increases the safety and agency of local renters. We hopefully don't have to work too hard to convince you of the benefits of such a program, since in two thousand seven, the state's early intervention program recommended a rental inspection program should be aggressively pursued. In addition, this policy was recommended by the city's own Planning and Zoning Commission and Fire Chief in two thousand nine, and has been a part of the city's comprehensive plan since two thousand thirteen. We believe that everyone has the right to safe and affordable housing. While this won't fully achieve that goal, it moves us in the right direction. It is essential that the program be mandatory as well, because we have talked to many residents this year who have expressed concerns, not only about their living conditions, but also about their landlords. Some have reported being bullied, some have been threatened, many have been ignored when they raise concerns or ask things to be fixed. And some indicated that they couldn't complain because they were afraid of potential retribution and possible harassment or eviction. As renters, we both understand the power dynamic between landlord and tenant puts most of the power in the landlord's hands. We are both fortunate enough to have great landlords who work with us and care for their properties proactively. But that is not the case for many residents. They too deserve to have safe and dignified places to live. In our canvassing efforts this summer, we talked to more than ten percent of Meadville residents, and the support for rental housing, rental licensing and inspection program was overwhelmingly positive. This is why we must pass and implement this program as soon as possible.
Don Zimmer? Sam? Don?
Good evening. My name's Don Zimmer. I live at seven oh four Arch Street. I've been a property owner and taxpayer in Meadville for over fifty years. I've also been a health officer, a housing inspector in Crawford County, and a landlord in Meadville. I support the proposed rental unit inspection program. You cannot operate a program and base it on complaints by the tenants. It doesn't work. By the time the tenant complains, there's already bad blood between the property owner and the tenant. The property owner will become vindictive and either evict the tenant or raise a rent. Then the complaint is gone, and you get nothing improved. By having the required inspections, the bad blood between the landlord and the tenant never happens, and improvements can move forward. Self-inspection by landlords doesn't work either. The landlord only sees what they wanna see when they inspect the property. When I was a landlord, I had a section eight rental unit. Under section eight, you have annual inspections by, an inspector by the section eight program. One of my tenants was a resident for over twenty years. So I have over twenty year, twenty inspections at that property, and yes, I had repairs to do and corrections that I missed in my inspections, but it was no real difficulty, and I got things fixed up. As I said, I fully support this required rental unit inspection program, and I wish the zoning inspections were also not based on complaints. I also agree with Mr. Rawa with his letter to the editor and tribute that there are many owner-occupied properties that also need improvements with inspections. Thank you.
Lindsay Melwray? Melwray?
Hi, guys, I'm Lindsay Melwray. My friends call me Blue. So for some background, I, because I know a lot of people need that around here, somebody might follow me through the story, and then around, I was having a weird comment last week. But me and my husband, we have been Meadville residents on and off our whole lives and steadily past five years. And I was a property manager a couple of years back for some historical houses downtown, during which I took upon myself to take some fair housing courses, and so I have a little bit of background, not a lot, but I try to think that I'm a little bit knowing in some of the things going on. Both of me and my husband, we work full-time here in town as factory workers, and we work hard twelve-hour shifts. I'm a forklift driver, he's a CNC operator. We have three kids, and in our early thirties, we are on food stamps and Medicare, and we live on welfare. But not because we are lazy, it's because we qualify. And I think that's important for people to know, because people have been asking for somebody on welfare to talk, so here we are. The reason I'm here today, though, is to talk about the rental inspection program, and it's because my family and my friends are living in unacceptable conditions for years in fear that they're going to do little more than settle for basic living, survivable living conditions. And they don't want to say anything because they don't wanna get blackballed from the current landlord or their friends or down the line. The things, you know, are, you know, when you, when you go to these places, they say, this is how many rooms you have, this is how many bathrooms we have. But the things that I need to know are, how many smoke alarms are in this house? How many are there in this unit? Because down the line, when we have a small house fire like we had, the judge told me, well, it was my fault, because I didn't know how many smoke alarms I had in my house, because we lived there more than six months now, it was my fault that I didn't have enough smoke alarms in my house. Now I got fined two hundred dollars for something my landlord should have had done. Which was, you know, in my opinion, not great, but maybe it's in the landlord's opinion that it was my job to put those smoke alarms up. I needed to know that every window in my place wasn't broken once winter came. Now I'm paying huge, you know, expenses. But he did come back and he did fix my windows after I put them under code enforcement, which we've been under for a year. Which is, you know, that's helped, he has come back, he has fixed things. Not everything, it's coming up on a year now, and we still haven't had everything fixed. Which was, you know, that was actually suggested by Mary-Lac Marcie Cantz. We went through fire department, everything like that, so we're doing what we should, what we should do. And, uh, so, I'm just, I'm here to say, because I want my story heard, of, you know, we go through the right steps, we talk to landlord, try to get things fixed, but then accidents happen, we find out that we are not living in the kind of conditions we get in trouble, and it doesn't make any sense to us, then we want things fixed, landlord says, do it, well, then we go to, under code enforcement, and my landlord's pissed at me. And, uh, you know, his wife is coming after me, yelling at me in my house, and pestering me, and just being friggin' awful. And, uh, the other thing was, is, you know, icicles falling on my, on, almost on the mailman. Now we have new mailmen, they fell on the neighbor's truck, neighbor's truck. They had to, they built a whole garage to try to not get their truck hit by icicles and create bad blood between me and the neighbors. And, you know, all the while, they're renovating their buildings downtown for their businesses and making new businesses just for fun. You know, she sits down at her little candy shop, just having fun down in her new little business, being cute, while my house and the houses around us aren't being taken care of. So, uh, you know, I'm just here to say that I support the policy, me and my family do. And in conclusion, I'm excited to see a pre-rental policy move forward, and I'd invite those who oppose the policy to really turn inwardward and consider, you know, maybe finding another job if they can't emotionally handle change, because I think that people in Meadville deserve warm and safe houses. Thank you.
Amelia? Amelia?
Hi. I'm lurking in the hallway.
That's okay.
Hi, um, so I just wanna speak in strong support of this program. I've lived in unsafe housing before. I've been shocked in the shower by one of those devices that heats the water up as it comes out, very dangerous. And, you know, I've been the victim of armed robbery in a house that didn't have safe locks. Now I live in a safe house, and I own it myself, but I have had that experience, and it's just completely not fair to have unsafe housing that people can rent, and, and they absolutely have no recourse without making their landlord angry, which is just not fair to them. So I, I think we really need this program, it's absolutely essential for keeping people safe, especially children who are at higher risk of all kinds of health issues from various violations that they might encounter in a home, like carbon monoxide, for example, or lead paint. And so, uh, yeah, I just wanna speak in very strong support of the program. That's all.
Donna? Donna?
Yeah. I lived at my address for three, three years. Ever since I lost my husband, with my job, I don't bring enough income. And since I wasn't the age to grab, hit, because they combined our income together, I wasn't at the age to grab it. And now, now my landlord is evicting me, and I have nowhere to go. And I have dogs, most landlords don't want as many dogs as I have. And I need my dogs, 'cause I have a hearing problem. I can't get a second job 'cause of my health. I have nowhere to go, now my landlord just served me just before I went to work with Wood of Court. And I don't know where to turn to now. Now with winter coming, I just don't have money to move. And that, a lot of this is putting a lot of stress on me. I looked around for a lot of places, I've looked online, I can't believe how a lot of these places are for rent. And that. I made it for two and a half years with one place helping for rent and all my bills, and I thank God that helped for two and a half years. And that. But right now, I just don't know what I'm gonna do. And that. I wish there was programs out there at least before to help me now. And that. But I just don't know what I'm gonna do now with my, the way my landlord's treating me now. I mean, people should see how people like me are living when you don't barely have no money coming in, just only off what your pay is. Especially when you don't have other income coming in. And I'm fighting since I lost my husband to get my main source of income back. And it's been almost three years, since I lost my husband, didn't you? This coming January will be three years. And that, especially when someone hits and you can't click unemployment. And that, and you got dogs, and you need to, you know, do laundry and that. Try to have money to do all that. And the way to help you. And I walk, I don't have a vehicle, I had to give it up after I lost my husband. It's hard. And I know a lot of you probably see where I do. I work. I'm on Park Avenue in Randolph, if a lot of you go by me, 'cause that's what I do. I stand in all kinds of weather. And that. But thank you for your time.
Daniel Bell?
Hello. I rent at six forty-five Washington Street. I've lived there for December twenty-seventh to be exactly a year. Paid approximately seven hundred dollars a month in rent, so I've paid almost eighty-four hundred dollars to my landlord. I've had problems since I've moved in, leaking ceiling, flooding basement, you name it. I've called, sent messages, pictures, over and over. I recently threatened with court to my landlord, 'cause I'm not getting anywhere. And he's just collecting all this money with no repairs or anything. After I threatened with court, he showed up to my house, nor he called me, asked me what I wanted done. Told him, the immediately concern was a broken window in my son's room. It's about to be winter time, it's cold as heck, and, you know, I don't want a high gas bill. I told him that, you know, I wanted a timeframe. It's always, you know, I'll get to it when I can, or, you know, I'll get it in the next couple of months, and, you know, I want an exact date of when things are gonna get done. He said he'd be by the next day, came by a half an hour late with a paper in his hand saying that he would no longer be renewing my lease. So I'm evicted. And here the process starts all over again. Not only are we limited to where we can rent, especially me, I've got kids. I share custody with my ex-wife, so I'm stuck in Meadville, so to speak. And I'm limited to, you know, the biggest, what size property I can rent. I need at least like a three to four-bedroom place. Not a lot of options available, so I'm forced to rent what I can rent. The problem with that is, the steps of trying to see if a place is safe and, you know, make sure that it's, you know, up to par for my kids to live there and, you know, suitable for us. This program would take all that hoops jumping and all that searching and trying to find out if this place is suitable for me, all that headache away. It is imperable that you guys act on this immediately, because here I am in the same place, being forced to rent from another landlord, that I don't know if the place is suitable or been inspected or up to quality, nor do I have time to worry about that or be concerned about, you know, safety issues and stuff. I've got a month to find a place for me and my kids. So with this program being in effect, I don't have to worry about, is this place gonna be safe? Is this place gonna be up to code? This will take all the questions out of the process. Thank you.
Sina? Sina?
That's me.
It's Sina. Sina.
I'm Sina, and I support this residential inspection program. I live in public housing, so you would think that our places get inspected every year and that they would be safe. But housing, ever since they remodeled our bathrooms, has continually ignored complaints of tenants that we have black mold growing in our apartments for years now. Now I didn't understand the extent of the problem at first, but first the mold started showing up around the surround. Now it's on the ceiling, and I thought that was bad enough. This summer, my daughter, who has allergies, kept complaining she couldn't breathe in her room all summer long. I thought it was allergies, so she slept downstairs. I went upstairs to her room to help her clean, and there is black mold growing inside my baby girl's window frame. And I go outside, and there is mold, and it has come from the bathroom. It's growing all through the siding of my apartment, on the outside, you can see it, all the way around the corner, and it got into my child's bedroom. And housing isn't doing anything about it. The tenants have been complaining for years, and mold is dangerous, and this is my children. So I think these rental inspections are an absolute must, because this is not, I'm sure you guys are aware of the news, the first issue in public housing that the housing authority is doing nothing about. I wanna feel like my house is safe for my children to live in, but I'm not just talking for myself. I have neighbors that have COPD, I have neighbors that have disabilities and breathing problems and heart issues, and I took a stroll down the back of my neighborhood, it's all the houses, there's mold on all the houses. And we're getting no answers. They have made the ability to contact your landlord down at housing almost impossible. You call, you get a recorded message. Last time I left a message to address this issue, the lady that called me back told me that I am not allowed to leave messages on her answering machine complaining about issues. I have to put it in writing, and then I've gotta wait thirty days for a response. So I absolutely urge you to pass this residential inspection. I'm not sure if to call it, because it is absolutely needed, because even people in public housing, we're not safe. Our apartments are not safe, and we're not being heard, our voices are not being heard. So I hope you're hearing my voice today.
Darrell?
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me. My name is Darrell Whitney, I'm the current administrator of the Academy Theater downtown Meadville. I started here in Meadville when I graduated from college at Edinburgh University, and then moved to New York City for ten years in Brooklyn and Astoria and Queens, and then eight years in Pittsburgh in the South Side area. I've been a full-time rental, rentee for the past twenty-six years, and I implore you as a consul to pass a rental inspection program for Meadville, Pennsylvania, because upon returning to the area, I was saddened to see some of the conditions that my fellow community members live in here in Meadville. At the Academy, I am responsible, as the administrator, to fulfill inspections for fire extinguishers, for smoke alarms, for fires, for sprinklers, as well as boiler maintenance at the Academy. I keep it up to code in all inspection to make sure that the, that the community, the community that we have and that we serve, tens of thousands of people every year, are not only safe, but comfortable when they come to the Academy. I implore you to do the same for the residents in their homes. Thank you very much.
Lynn? Lynn McCumber?
Lynn McCumber? Yep.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to offer comment. My name is Lynn McCumber, I'm the executive director of CHAPS in Meadville, and I am also a homeowner in the city of Meadville. Speaking on behalf of CHAPS, CHAPS owns a number of rental properties, and we also manage over 65 housing vouchers, having paid local landlords several million dollars in rent over the past 20 years. While there have been challenges at times, as there are with many rental situations at times, I believe this has vastly been a win-win relationship for the landlords, CHAPS, and the tenants. Our properties are all inspected, and landlords are very willing to have them inspected, and there's always misses. Landlords think things are in order as we think things are in order with our properties, and we realize that there are misses. We also assist many individuals and families, hundreds over the years, thousands really, with locating housing. One of our primary goals is to ensure that individuals and families, and families with children, are stably housed and in safe and decent dwellings regardless of their income. We believe that every child and every adult deserves to be safe from harm and safe from unhealthy living conditions. We believe this should not be a privilege reserved only for those with the ability to reside in high-rent housing. As a landlord, we acknowledge the responsibility of providing decent, safe housing, and we're willing to pay $38 per unit per year to create a system to help make this happen. If a time comes that we, as a landlord, are unwilling or unable to pay $38 per year, or if we cannot meet this very basic inspection checklist, then we know that it would be time to examine and acknowledge that we probably should not be in the landlord business. I respectfully encourage council to vote to support this plan, and I hope those in our community who are struggling with the plan will have an open mind and give the program a chance to succeed, as it has in many other communities. Our children, our families, and our community deserve this. Thank you.
Joe?
Yep. My name is Joe Tompkins, I'm here to talk about traffic lights. No, I'm here to talk about the rental inspection program. I'm standing out there in the hallway, I don't know if people on Armstrong can tell, but there's a hallway full, packed full of people who are all here to support the rental inspection program. I think there's an audience who's packed in here to support the program. We've been hearing from the same small group of landlords.
Not all.
Well, except for one landlord right there. But everybody else, we've been hearing from the same group of landlords who have been vocal in their opposition over the last few weeks, but I just wanted to underscore the fact that we've got a petition, a group of petitions, over 1,000 people signed. I was one of those people knocking on doors. I own a rental property, I support the ordinance, it's long overdue, and I'm looking forward to it passing and moving on to the next thing.
Maria?
Hi, Maria Rosado, husband, I live at 77 Wadsworth Ave. I work in social services, per se, more or less, and I deal with a lot of these situations. I have to make referrals to Lynn that just spoke, trying to help people find housing. I also, like, try to advocate for some of our community members who don't feel safe, and stressing their needs to their landlords for many of the reasons that we've heard of. So I would like to not have that be an issue to have to advocate for. I would like safe housing for everybody. I'm a renter myself, my landlords are awesome, they will fix things, they don't have a problem with this, registration or ordinance. I don't see why anybody would. People having a safe home to live in is not asking too much, so I'm here in support of it, and I look forward to it passing.
Lizbeth?
Lizbeth Searle White, you've heard from me before, I'm a longtime resident of Meadville, and I'm here to express strong, strong support for the rental registry program. I'm one of the people that went around canvassing, I probably secured maybe 50 of those signatures. And I'll just tell you, talking to people, even the people who are super happy currently with their rental situation, and there are quite a few people that are very happy, we have a lot of good landlords, almost everyone had a nightmare story from prior, I mean heartbreaking stories, and stories of abuse and just neglect. So it's time, we need to do this. You know, I rent out part of my house some of the time, I would be gladly subject to this. And it's just the right thing to do, and it's the right time. Thank you.
Taylor?
Hi, Taylor Hinton, way to meet her. And I came mostly to express support for the rental inspection program. I did door knocking this summer as well, and met some great people who deserve safe housing. And mostly I just wanna say the longer we deliberate and meetings get pushed back, the longer folks are suffering in their homes. One of the great people I met this summer was Manny, do you wanna share? All right, awesome, so Manny wanted to share a story that I gave her before.
So I'm in support of the renter program as well, but I'm speaking on behalf of the lady who was talking about the housing authority. I have a father-in-law who currently lives in Holland Towers and is going through about the same thing that she's going through, only bedbugs, roaches, and he currently has no ceiling, and he has spoken to the people several times, got nothing. Even voicemails, got nothing. He also has black mold growing on the outside and inside of his living room, and he has COPD, and he also has neuropathy, and he currently is going through a really bad ear infection and a headache to the point that he just, he's giving up. He just doesn't know where to turn. He has an aide who also tries to help and do the best she can, and it's to the point that her voice isn't getting heard either. So I'm just speaking on behalf of not just me, but everybody in Meadville, and I think this renter program will really help everybody. Thank you.
Cassandra?
Hi. I am here to stand in solidarity with renters in Meadville, and to thank this city council for doing what you're on, keeping a campaign promise, and all of the volunteers who spent a lot of hours drafting this ordinance. And I just wanna make a couple of points. Kind of reiterate that if this program costs landlords a lot of money, it's because their properties are not safe. $38 a unit is not a lot of money. And also, we've heard stories about the housing authority, and the housing authority does yearly inspections for housekeeping and maintenance. I lived there for 10 years, I also had mold, and I also had roaches, the entire time, and I was told to hit it with a little bleach. I'm just saying, self-policing doesn't work, and that's like a prime example of that. So I think that's all I have to say, but thanks for your time.
Lee?
Hi folks, my name is Lee Scannanero at 230 Mount Hope Street. I would just urge you to please pass this rental inspection program, like, really soon, like, maybe today. Right, like, I'm ready to move on to the next thing, because this isn't enough, this program isn't enough. Like we just heard from Donna, right, like, people are really, really struggling. We all know this, and if you don't know this, I don't know what life you're living, okay? But people are really struggling, and I feel like we keep putting off passage of this, but it, like, we just need to pass it, like, right now, okay? I, I'm pretty tired of the fear tactics that some people in our community are using to say that this is going to increase homelessness, or whatever, whatever, but it's not, in fact, there's no link whatsoever between the two. The link is that people just need to know that their house is safe. Thank you very much.
Jason?
Hello, my name's Jason Ramsey, I've been a Meadville resident for 18 years. I've been really fortunate over that time, for the most part, to be a homeowner. In 2017, I got divorced, and I found myself having to find a place really quickly to live in. I found a place, it was a great place, it was a great adventure. I was a little nervous about it, getting to know my neighbors, getting to know a different part of town, but I gotta tell you, I was damn lucky. I was lucky that I found a relatively safe, a relatively clean, a local landlord, and I was very fortunate. Being in that neighborhood taught me a few things. The houses around me were not very well-kept up, and it was very shocking to me as someone who had basically grown up and lived in houses that were completely under my control or my family's control. And so I think that perspective is the reason I'm here today in support of the rental inspection program. $38 is not a lot of money. If anyone's thinking that's a lot of money, that's, what, $3 a month? $3 a month. To do something, I can't top what Lee said about needing to do more, but to do something to help folks that either don't have the capacity, or the time in their lives, or the financial means to make the best possible decision that they can make, because they have to make the decision that is presented to them right now in order to make their day-to-day existence work. I got to know my neighbors in my new neighborhood, and they were amazing people. I really, actually, I miss the camaraderie and getting to know just people that would feed me. We'd have barbecues, we'd hang out on the porch and talk, and I didn't really fully know the situation until I helped one of them move out. They had to move out in a hurry, I didn't know the full circumstances, I suspect it was similar to a lot of what folks have said in their own personal experience. And helping them move, I felt physically ill walking up and down the stairs from the smell of the mold. I could not believe the conditions right next door to the house that I was living in. The last thing I would wanna say is of the lessons I learned was having my son walk to school. I wanna say, having two crossing guards here, the one lesson I taught my son is if a crossing guard tells you to do something, you do it. Thank you.
Matt?
Hello, my name is Matt DeTherum, I've lived in Meadville for about six and a half years, I've been a renter that entire time. I'm here in support of the rental inspection program. It's indefensible that we don't already have this in place. It's clearly a need in this community, it clearly has huge support in this community. It's clearly a workable plan, because lots of other communities around us already have this in place, right? And so I wanna urge the city council, much like Mr. Scannanero did just a bit ago, pass this damn thing tonight, start to right some of the wrongs that have long been present in this community, and let's move on to the next best thing, start making people's lives in this town a little bit better. Thank you.
Guy McCumber?
Hi, I'm Guy McCumber, I'm from 917 South Morgan Street. I can't add much to what was said tonight, I just wanna publicly express my approval of the support of the rental ordinance. I think it would be a beautiful thing, because it would make Meadville a more fair and equitable place. Thank you.
All right, that was the last, that was the last one. Public comment? Notice of executive session? None? Approval of minutes? Second? Discussion? Rocco?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel? Kendra?
Aye. Communications? Managers report? Council Subcommittee Report? Housing and Economic Development? Obviously, we have the rental project on, you know, on the books here today. Above and beyond that, I don't think we have anything like that. Community Engagement?
I, we haven't met, but I do wanna say that the budget simulator is live, and I think the QR code has been reactivated, it will be reactivated soon. But the link should, the link from the city's website, from the city's Facebook page should also work. And if you love QR codes, just keep trying in the next few days. But basically, we wanna hear from folks about how you wanna see the city's, what do you wanna see the city's budget to look like, how do you wanna see the city's tax dollars spent? And it's a great tool, I think, both for folks to understand more about city finances, right? How we get money in, where all of our money goes, and then also, it's a good tool for us to hear from you, so you can weigh in and submit it. And I encourage folks to take part in that, and hopefully this will be the first year of us using this more participatory system to get public input on our city's finances, they are public dollars that we all control. And we've got, if you've got questions about it, I encourage you, write to pull it up, maybe look at it, and spend some time with it, because we've got two more public sessions about the budget, where you can actually ask questions of department heads, tomorrow from 1:00 to 3:00, and Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00. I've memorized the rest of them. So if those times work, please come, if they don't, send an email to city council, or come to the building during regular hours. But we wanna hear from you, and we want to know. Is there, can they access it just from the city website?
Again.
Okay. Yeah, there's another avenue, so the QR code is frustrating, and we really do want to hear your feedback.
Finance?
Well, we're in the midst of budget negotiations and discussions, we had a meeting last night, two members of the public did show up, and as of yesterday evening, there were 10 responses, and only six of them were usable for various reasons from the balancing act. But we have two more hearings to go, and then first and second readings in December and final passage.
Do we know how long that QR code's been down, or we just don't know as of yet? I, I. Because we just.
I'm not just gonna go to them.
Okay. Just a question. Old Business? Authorities' Boards and Commissions? Housing Authority Appointments? So we have, we have one position coming up with someone who may want to be reappointed, is that what this is?
Correct, so Tom Enblood, who currently serves on the Housing Authority Board, his term expires January 1st, 2023. He has indicated an interest in being reappointed for another five-year term that is up before council to reappoint. I would wanna table this, this reappointment. I guess that's a motion, if that's a, that's a motion, I move to table.
So you wanna second that?
I second it.
Discussion? Discussion? Rocco?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rohan?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kendra?
Aye. Third and final reading, update to stormwater management ordinance? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
This was presented before council for first and second reading on October 3rd. The delay was just due to advertising requirements, but there have been no changes since that October 3rd meeting where it passed on first and second reading.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Rocco?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rohan?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kendra?
Aye.
New business? Discussion, proposed 2023 budget?
So, Your Honor, this is an item we added just as, for the next couple of weeks, if council wanted to discuss anything in regards to the budget at this meeting. If not, we can certainly move on. I don't have anything specific to ask council about, but if you have something that you'd like to discuss, we can certainly do that.
All right. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a couple of suggestions.
Sure.
We haven't gotten to them yet, but I've done some research in theory, looking at the reserve parking rates in their garages, and I would suggest that we consider strongly increasing ours so that we have adequate capital to address needed repairs. And you'll recall that when Gary Johnson left briefly, we went with another inspection outfit, and we adopted fees. When Gary returned, we, well, four to one. We got rid of those fees and went back to our own schedule. The reason why I voted against it now, and I'm, or then, is that I figured we need to have higher inspection fees, which reflect that, which is charging the market to better cover our costs and reduce the burden on taxpayers. So those are two recommendations. Increase parking garage rates and adopt the inspection fees that the commercial provider had given us a few months ago.
What, what are the fees for parking in other areas? Do we have, like, a comparison? Do you know? No idea?
We, didn't we?
Yes.
So we, we had also, just like, within the last few years, we've increased those rates, right?
We've increased them, yes.
Correct. The, the reserved parking rates went up, I think, $10 to $20. $10, depending on if you're, for covers bases or slum covers.
Not just a month, right? So we've already increased them in the last two and a half?
That's correct.
Years. $10 a month.
Do, do we know if they're in line with other places?
We can find that out, we can provide that to council.
They're definitely lower than here, by about $20 a month.
They may be lower, but I'll tell you what. My fear is you raise them, you're gonna, you're gonna have people, people are already complaining now about the cost of parking. You raise them, people aren't gonna even want to shop downtown, so.
Well, but these are, these are reserved spaces.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying. People don't want, they're not buying, people aren't wanting to use them anymore, because, number one, where they're at, and if you're gonna raise them.
No, these are, these are not for the public.
I know, they're reserved, I understand that. And people, I've talked to a couple of people that they are provided those, and they're talking about if the company has to go up, they might not have it. Is it worth it to risk losing people that are downtown with what it is?
On the other hand, if we don't have the adequate capital, we won't have a parking garage in a number of years. That, it's undercapitalized, it was undercapitalized from day one. When they were charging $40 a month, the napkin math was it took about $122 a month to maintain it and have adequate capital reserve so it would not fall to the ground. So even at $70 a month, that's still 50 months less than what the cost would be to adequately address capital needs on an ongoing basis, so that we have a parking garage.
I, I wonder, and this is just something I was wondering the other day, is it, let's say we did, and this is, again, pie in the sky, really quick. If we did raise parking garage? If, instead of, you're, you're just talking to parking garage, just the reserved?
I'm talking to reserved and parking garage, yes.
I mean, could we have an option where somebody could split that? Where, you know, residences could rent it from 12 hours, and then the business could rent it 12 hours, so they keep at the same rate? And then, you know, somebody who lived downtown could rent it from, you know, the other 12 hours, and then we'd get to that rate, and they would be guaranteed that reserved spot for that? You know what I mean? I don't know, I just.
We, we can explore a lot of different avenues of what that might look like, but.
And it's my understanding that we got a grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission to do a feasibility study around the parking garage. So can that include appropriate, like, fee structure and sharing of spots, right? Like, I think that wouldn't necessarily be reflected in the, in the budget, but it's already work that we're planning to do, is, right? Is, is consider the garage? And it's like long-term viability? So that makes sense to incorporate it there.
So a couple of things, I had some questions. If, if some things change, right, in the budget, if some numbers change, and, and we get some, some better numbers and things like that, when do we see those? Do we see them during this budget process? Or do we see those, you know, do you change those in, in, like, the app as that happens, or? Do you know what I mean? Like, I know things, you know, change, and when actual numbers come in. How does, how does that reflect? How do we?
During your deliberations, you'll talk about that, and if Jim's wish comes true, then you would, you would adopt the new parking schedule, which would be effective January 1st.
So nothing will change in, in, like, the balancing act? You won't see that reflected? It'll just be at the end of the budget discussion, those changes will be made even throughout.
Yeah, and any adjustments you want to the budget, that's what we'd be doing the next few meetings.
Yeah, I think, Jamie, I think what you're talking about is, like, insurance. We budgeted a lot higher than I think has come back, right? Right now, in our budget book, it's reflected at one number. When does that update? Is that what, yeah, we kind of like, when, when will that update? Like, once, once we?
Throughout the next couple of meetings, yeah.
Okay, so we'll see those actual numbers?
You'll see some of those numbers, and, and we'll be able to tell you the ups and downs of what happened since we presented the proposed budget.
We won't actually update your books. What we'll do is provide you, like, a menu of.
Like a small, like a, okay.
What I'm asking for, do we have any updated numbers? Is our insurance looking better than we thought it would?
We've been working pretty hard on it the last three days, and we're getting closer to uploading some of the information and coming back with firmer numbers. But it looks very positive.
More positive than?
Way more positive.
Way more positive. Way, way, with a way, way more positive.
We'll talk, we'll talk.
How does that work? So if the rental registration program passes, and then how, if it's not a line item in the budget, how do we?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at Gary Johnson now, but I do remember talking with him, and he did say that it probably would take almost a year, Gary, to get this up and going, so we did not include anything in this year's budget, knowing full well that it's gonna be, you know, it'll take a while.
Okay, great. I think the timeline was that the registration begins 2023 inspections to 2024.
And then, have you guys been working on numbers at all? Like, not like we're asking for those tonight, but?
I think Gary has. I haven't spent a lot of time with him.
I think that's where the fee control, the $38?
Right, yeah. Yeah, I guess I was just wondering.
Yeah, once, once we get to that point, then we'll, we'll be able to firm up a lot more.
Great.
And then my last question, I guess, would be for the budget. I know we've had some, you know, discussion about the mark. I know that is, is, is something. What would we have to do to create, make that a line item in our budget? I know it's not, I know we've got some ideas, right? I know that, but I know that I, I, what I was hearing last night, and what I was hearing from Donna the other day, and, and I feel their pain, right? Like, and I know that that is, I, I know that that is, you know, not how we, we did it. I know we're promising, right, that money. But how can we put that back in, knowing that we are, are working on it, right? Like, 'cause, 'cause ultimately, it's just the line, right? Like, it's just the line, you guys are working on it, you guys are, are.
So again, throughout your budget discussions, this is something you'll say to us to say, hey, we would like to see that restored. Mary Ann's working very hard to figure out where other revenues may come from. If that comes to fruition, then we'll put the line item in the general fund, if that's the way it is, or if this other agency or whatever we use is gonna pay directly, then we won't have to do anything with it. But that will, again, be part of the budget discussions, and as we go forward, we'll have more information.
Okay, so can we do that? Can we put it back in, and then?
Again, throughout the discussions, these are all the adjustments that you're gonna tell us, from parking to everything, putting that back in and everything. So when the final proposed budget will become the final budget, then you'll see all that in there, if that's what you desire.
Okay.
But this is a discussion on the budget, right? So this, we, we could say tonight, we want to, but like, this, you know, Jim brought some recommendations.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, gonna be hopefully, a lot of little adjustments that we do. Medical could be one of them, the mark, depending on how that works out in the next 30 days. But yeah, all this will come, come through when you vote on the final budget.
Sure, so, so I guess, 'cause I, what's, what's not clear, like, Tim, when I hear you talk, it sounds like we're gonna have these discussions, but the ways, the way in which the public budget sessions have been set up are like open houses, so those aren't necessarily discussions of council to have. So I don't know, like, when do those conversations happen? Before our third, sorry, before our first and second reading?
Well, last night, it worked out pretty well that a couple of council people were here, and they heard from the public about what, what the mark is, and, and they heard from us of how we want to go about doing it. So yeah, there was some, some public input on that.
Right.
I'm not sure.
But there's no chance for deliberation and like a consensus of council?
Yeah, we're doing it a lot different than we had in previous years, so there's probably gonna have to be another agenda item where you actually sit down and tell us each of the things you want, and then we'll go forward with it.
So that's not tonight, that is a different?
It, it will be ongoing. Hopefully, we'll wait a couple more meetings that we have for the open public.
Yeah, makes sense, to get all that feedback, yeah.
But, and I don't, I'm not sure there's a few more meetings that we're gonna have that council can give us their suggestions on what they want to add or subtract from the budget.
We can add another meeting at the end of the month, if you would prefer, just specifically to discuss budget.
Traditionally, you have a meeting the Tuesday, next Tuesday? That, in years past, that's happened with the budget, but we could also add one. There's an extra week in November this year, so.
All right. I'm, I'm just gonna, I, I would like to see it back in the budget, is, I guess, what I'm saying.
So I suppose if there's a consensus of council tonight, we can just do that.
I, and, and I guess that's what I was kind of asking. Not, because I know you're working really, really hard, but I know that they, there was a lot last night, right? Like, and, and it was very difficult, it's very difficult for people to understand when it's not as a line item, but we're saying, yes, we're gonna do it, right? Like, and I, not, not a lot, but one person, right? Like, was, was having a really hard time understanding the.
He was struggling, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, with that. And I think that if we just had it in as a line item, so that they could see it, and then, and then we just work on it.
When we put that in there, it's $125,000.
Right.
So now tell me what revenues you want to use to, to support that $125,000.
Right, sure.
Well, it's my understanding that we're working on the revenue to, to do it, but we're.
I think what Tim's saying is it's hard to, you have to have a balanced budget, so to have that expenditure of another $125,000. What are the revenues? Is it just plugging in a?
Only you say that, insurance came back a lot better than it was.
But again, see, this is, this is the good thing. We're all gonna put this together so that the final proposed budget will be with all your, your suggestions.
Can, can we, along these lines, to give us a sense, right? Because the way that we have scheduled these public budget sessions is that they're open house, public can come and go. In council, there's not an opportunity for deliberation or like consensus to, consensus to add things. It would be like one person asking you to add something, or, you know, to the two members of council that are there. Can we add another meeting? Maybe like a study session on the 30th? Or is that extra Wednesday, that, like, more a lunchtime?
Because in previous years, we've always had that open after Thanksgiving to have a study session, should council want to deliberate more often on it.
Right.
Yeah, it sounds like your consensus is you're gonna go forward with that, it's just we gotta figure out how to get there. There's two sides to the equation.
If you have it on the 30th, that would be the 30th, I believe. Yeah, I think noon might be problematic for at least one of us, if not two of us.
Six p.m.'s problematic. Maybe we can, we can. A different day of the week. Wednesday's not the only day that exists, but.
So if we're aiming for the last, I guess all we need to know is, are you aiming for another meeting at the end of the month?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and we'll try to work that out and see what works best for everybody now in council.
And then we can, we can add that back in and get some other numbers possibly with the insurance.
Correct.
All right.
Maybe have the numbers that Jim talked about, parking?
Yeah.
And the inspection rate?
Does anybody have any other questions on the proposed budget?
Just so, for the final meetings, there are preference between daytime and evening, so we know that what we're looking at here.
It might have to be a, a different time, right? Jim, you're saying you can't make it at noon?
I, I have problems sometimes at noon.
We, we can hash that out offline.
And then just, okay.
Right.
Any other questions for the budget? Okay, discussion, Strategic Management Planning Program, Phase 2 grants, software.
So Gary Johnson is here, I think he's in the hall right there. So you recall that the city received almost $200,000 in state grant to implement, implement technology recommendations made in the Strategic Management Plan, Planning Program report. Gary's here to talk about what some of those software and technology things are.
Right, so some of the main, good evening, council. Some of the main recommendations coming out of the stamp had to do with hardware and software to make things more efficient and to help drive the city's obliques reduction strategy. And those mainly had to do with GIS-based components. There are three that will be before council on the December 7th, meaning essentially three contracts of service. The first one is with GoGov, is what staff is recommending with GoGov, which has to do with code enforcement and permitting, which is mainly what I do. It would allow GIS-based, so you can go into the GIS, you click on a house, you can find all the permits, all the code violations, all the different types of things that might be occurring there. So that's from a code enforcement and permitting standpoint. The second one is called Cartograph, and this is where public works. It's for asset management. Again, it's GIS-based. It will allow Nathan and the guys to figure out, okay, where are we having main, main problems? Or should we focus our stormwater money? Help with CDVG planning when it comes down to where do the investments need to be made? It will really help with that. The third one is actually, was, we, we did some shuffling around. We looked at some different vendors, and we were able to free up some money. And when Peter came on, Peter Gorilla, of course, our city planner, he needs some stuff to do his job right. So essentially, what that means is the third one is with, it's called Esri, which is the main GIS provider worldwide, frankly. And it'll be a, it'll be, I'm sorry, a program with Esri, and it'll also be some hardware for him to be able to use to do proper planning, if you will, which we haven't done quite in quite some time. So those are the three components that will be coming before council on the 7th of December. So those are the three components that will be coming before council on the 7th of December. Again, as Mary Ann mentioned, it's 90% funded by the state grant, 10% from the city. And just real quick, we are able to get four years of GoGov, the code enforcement and permitting, three years of the Cartograph, and five years of the RGIS licensing paid through this program. So we're gonna end up authorizing, if council acts, to authorize about, it's gonna cost the city about $17,000 for all of that, okay, moving forward for the next few years. And with, with that, you will have a little bit more information in your packets moving forward, but with that, I was just wanted to see if council had any specific questions with any of the other information you had.
Revises the city website?
Sure, there's, there's two, there's two other components that, that were part of the grant. One of them is revises, an update to the, to the city's website. And the last one was software and software for the police to do e-citations more efficiently. So those are the five components under that grant that we received. These are the last three to implement.
When we apply for the grant initially, is it always 90% covered by the state and 10% we knew we were covering?
The grant, yeah, it's, it's usually a 50-50 grant, but we were able to, showing the situation, we're, we're able to get 90% funding from the state.
Do you have a plan for what we do in five years?
I'm gonna look at Peter once he gets all this stuff, and he'll be able to come to council with all kinds of good stuff.
I can be able to plan that out.
Yeah, we're, we're getting there, we're getting.
Do we have a sense of the timeline for implementation?
Excellent question. January 1 would be beginning of that for all three of us, is what our target would be. They're pretty quick as far as getting it, at least getting it started, and then we'll have to build it from there.
Kudos to whoever got us 90%.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions?
This is coming up on the 7th, that we enter into the actual contracts themselves.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Discussion Environmental Advisory and Get Solar. So in 2021, council approved a letter supporting the Get Solar program and authorized staff to participate in the program as long as it did not commit the city to any type of funding. As part of Get Solar program, and after some discussions with folks from the Get Solar program, the city actually received some bids to place solar panels upon the DEP roof. As you recall, the DEP roof is scheduled for replacement this coming spring. This wouldn't be part of that if council elected to move forward with any solar panels, but in addition to that, that happening. So the thought, after some, some discussion with Get Solar and council members, was that perhaps this is a good project for the Environmental Advisory Council to look into, to see which of the bids installing solar panels would be best, if it's feasible at all. So per the EAC ordinance, council needs to give that directive as a body to the EAC to undertake this project. So tonight, that's what council is asked to consider, whether or not they want to task the EAC with evaluating the solar panel installation proposals and bring back a recommendation to council.
I would like them to, because I was reading this, and I would give some thought. Yeah.
Yeah, I would like that.
So it seems as though the consensus would be to have tasked the EAC to do that. I believe the EAC has actually formalized a meeting schedule. Their next meeting will be on December 15th, I think it's a Thursday?
Yes.
It's Thursday at 5:30, and moving forward, they will then meet every month, the third Thursday of the month, at 5:30, just for your knowledge. So we will inform the EAC that council has tasked them with this.
And just, I think for our knowledge, at their first meeting, there's also discussion of essentially adding another bid to the list. Allegheny now has certification to do solar installation, so it could potentially come even lower than, than the two we're seeing. So they're assembling a bid to, so they'll...
Allegheny College?
Yes. So they will add that bid to the, to the menu of options that they'll consider, is my understanding. And come back to us, I, I hope, and maybe we can charge them with both, consider the bids, but also options for financing and opportunities for covering some, if not all of the costs.
Any other questions?
If I may, it's not a legal issue, but one of my colleagues, a gentleman I've worked with for years, has a company called Stageworks, he's an energy consultant that focuses a large portion of his practice on the development of microgrids and sustainable energy generation to fund those, to fuel those microgrids. He's working with Duquesne Light and the City of Pittsburgh in various projects. I've told him about your committee, and he's expressed interest in maybe coming in to speak with some people to see how maybe he can lend his expertise. He's, he lives in South Carolina, but he works out of Pittsburgh, and he's up quite regularly. And I know that he's been involved in some pretty significant level projects. So if it's okay, I'll pass his name and contact information along too.
Yeah.
He's very, very interested in seeing if we can assist.
That'd be awesome.
And I understated his qualifications tenfold.
That'd be great. I know we have a committee member who's in the industry of microgrids. I don't know enough about the industry to know any more than that, but, but yeah, that would be awesome. So discussion motion, free downtown holiday parking.
So that, that time of year, quickly approaching, free downtown parking typically starts the day after Thanksgiving, which is next week. So included in your packet is a letter from Heather Fish, the Meadville Independent Business Alliance president, requesting that council reinstates the downtown free parking for two hours. Also included in your packet is the map of the locations, the map of locations for free parking has not changed since last year.
One second.
I believe there was an alternative presented to Meadville, they weren't...
That's correct.
Interesting. Great. Do you need help bagging meters, as is the tradition, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving?
More than likely, yes, and I will send out an email to solicit volunteers.
Okay. Any more discussion on, on the questions? We'll call.
McKnight?
Hi.
Myers?
Hi.
Roah?
Hi.
Vogel?
Hi.
Tinder?
Hi.
Ratify signatures, license agreement between the City of Meadville and Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for the use of...
We can do that, that's a quicker one.
Oh, you know what? There's, it's like, it's like way at the bottom here. I was, I was looking for it, yeah, no, I'm sorry. Nice, nice try, Jim. Yeah. Discussion Residential Rental Registry and Licensing Program. I really thought it was, it was like right above the City of Meadville, I just...
It's a big issue.
Yeah.
All right. So included in your packets, two members of council, Tim, myself, Rena, met, and Gary Johnson met a week or so ago at this point, to go over the proposed ordinance and make any adjustments. Those adjustments are included and reflected into packets, ordinance. The biggest thing at this moment is to decide how you want to handle Allegheny's dorms. So Allegheny has dorms that are traditional dorm style, which you would have a series of just rooms, and then one central bathroom or one central kitchen location. Then they also have apartment-style dorms. So how Erie handles their inspection of the dorms in Erie is that they are all handled under a boarding and rooming ordinance. The city has a rooming ordinance, they are not currently inspected under that ordinance. So the thought, as proposed, I think in the ordinance here, is that the apartment-style dorms would be inspected under a rental inspection program, and then the traditional dorms will be inspected under the boarding and rooming house ordinance. So that's the first question to answer, if you want to go that route. The second question is, what would the fee then be for the inspection of the boarding?
Yeah, so if I can, if I can just jump in about fees, and I sent some information to Mary Ann here, after Mr. Roah's comments regarding the increase in the fees for inspections, one of the things that we need to be cognizant of is that the fees have to be related to the sum required to pay for the cost of the performance of the service. And in Pennsylvania, as a municipality, we're not able to use fees for revenue generation, but rather to cover the cost of that which it is that we're doing. And some municipalities do, in fact, take a look at the commercial marketplace in order to determine what the fees are. However, if those fees were to be challenged, we would then be in a position of having to support that fee generation based on some sort of time study or, or cost analysis. So while we can look at that as a guide, I would, I would recommend to the city that we perform some level of cost analysis or maybe a time study regarding what we have into that particular program, and we can be broad in that determination, so long as it's properly documented, and I can help you through that. And I've sent you the standards from those cases, so you can have that. So when we're talking about the fees relative to the dorm inspections, they need to be directly related to the costs incurred. So I think as we're looking for how those are going to be generated, that we need to have a better understanding in the conversation with Mr. Johnson and others as to what costs are going to be incurred, who's going to be doing those inspections. I believe his office does that, and determines what that's gonna cost the taxpayer to make that happen, to make sure that that cost is covered.
So to be clear, though, right, that, that's in relation to the rooming house ordinance that we're looking at, right? We, we have the fee structure set up for the rental registration inspection, that, that is...
Yes, that was based upon the use of Gary's time and the violation of Gary's time, and then a secretary's time to help. So that's how the $38 per house.
And work with BIU, like, that's, that, that's where that comes from. So this is, so that more or less is, is ready to go, although we've been advised we cannot vote on it tonight. We have to advertise it as, as first and second reading. But that's, but, but that ordinance is ready to go. What we're talking about is considering the implications then for Allegheny dorms, the fee structure, which it sounds like we should look into more.
So, so these need to go, I think these need to go fairly hand in hand. So the, the rental registration and licensing ordinance, as it is written, does not include the fee within it for either the registration piece or the rental licensing inspection piece. That fee would be adopted by council via resolution as part of your annual fee structure. So I, I just don't want people to think that number's gonna be dumped into the ordinance, and it would require an amendment to the ordinance in order to change that fee in the future. The, the rooming house fee that we're looking at now needs to be considered as to how we're going to do it before we adopt that ordinance, because it may require ordinance changes, because it's a little different than the, than the inspection of a rooming house or bed and breakfast, which are the other two categories of properties that are inspected under that particular item. So I guess what we're asking here tonight is, do you believe it to be appropriate for us to do the inspection of the dormitories, your standard dorm rooms, under that rooming house piece, as was discussed in our meeting? Or is, is there some other approach that we want to take? And then, once we have that determination, we can generate that fee and, and see if we have, or the process to generate that fee, and see if we have to amend the ordinance further to make that happen.
This is a rooming house, right?
The rooming house.
So it's, that's separate from the...
If that's the direction you want to go. We need council's consensus that that's the direction you want to go. If it's not, we've got other work to do in the rental registration piece, the rental licensing ordinance.
Do you know if, in Erie, do you happen to know if they're treating all their dorms and townhouses as dorms? Do you have, because we're kind of not sure about that. You don't, right? Isn't that kind of like, we don't really, we're not sure?
Some of them are apartments.
No, but are they treating them, even though, does that, are they treating them on the spectrum?
I don't know how it is.
I, I don't know. As far as their dorms themselves, they're treating them under their boarding. I don't know how they're treating their, their apartments and townhouses. I don't know.
So the recommendation that we have made is that by tweaking the definition of the residential rental unit in the proposed ordinance, we were intentionally including, or, excuse me, not excluding the apartments that are run by the university. There'd be no reasonable basis that I could come up with in which to treat them any differently than any other apartment. So what we're solely talking about here, traditional dorm rooms without kitchens and bathrooms in the dorms.
Yeah.
Yeah, how Erie does it, I don't know, but that's how we were separating, is there was no legitimate differential in classification between apartments run, or townhouses run by the university, versus just simply dorms.
There is an argument to be made that if you're going to beat a bunch of people over the head, you should use the same-sized stick.
Very bound of you.
So if you're going to do it, and I don't support, I don't support doing, but if you're going to do it, then each dorm unit ought to be treated as a rental, because they are being rented. In fact, you could argue that if there's two people in a room, that there are two different people paying rent, but, I'll, I'll cut them a break on that. But for, for each room, I would say they should pay the fee for an apartment unit.
I disagree. I think that, as we discussed, it, it should go as, as the dormitories, as the rooming houses, like we, we discussed, and as is proposed, right? We, we do need to discuss that and, and check that out, and that's historically how they have been inspected before, through the fire department, and then they were excluded, each room was excluded, right? Later on, and, and what we're doing is now adding them back in, right? That, that's historically, I, you know what I mean? And how we add that in is different, and we are, we are actually keeping Allegheny College's dwellings, right? Their apartments, their, their townhouses, in the rental inspection program, which is the same-sized stick, as Jim puts it. And, and not, you know, charging a, a rental fee per bedroom, right? Like, which would, which would stand to reason if we're gonna go to each dorm room, it would be, you know, for me, I, I make that correlation, right? It's a bedroom with a, so I think we, we separate, like we said, we were going to, Allegheny College will be covered in dwelling under the rental inspection program, their apartments and their, and that is separated from dormitories, which have one, you know, probably one kitchen and one bathroom on each floor, that's a traditional, and, and, but each room will be added to, to, you know, where it will be looked into, right? Which has been excluded in the past because, for some reason, that changed at some point in the last, I don't know, what, 20 years, 10 years? It was like, I don't know what that was, but, so I, I say we, we separate them that way, as discussed. I think that's the, the best way to tackle this, right? I know we do need to have some of that fee structure, right? And, and understand that, but I think the rental ordinance, the, the inspection program is, is, you know, I look at it, I think it's ready, and we do have this other thing that we need to discuss, right? So, so in my opinion, right, that, that is, we are five people up here, but that's my understanding, that's the easiest way for me to understand things, that's the best way to create this, this, this inspection program. So I mean...
Yeah. I, I agree with you, Jamie.
In a lot of words.
I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with the rental registration and inspection program as it's presented to us in its current form, and then separately, moving forward with incorporating dormitories in the rooming ordinance and charging staff with doing the work to figure out what time is it gonna take, and therefore what's gonna, what fee schedule we have.
I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement with that as well.
So, so your consensus is developed, and, and so what we'll do, and by the way, I just want to give some kudos up to Mary Ann and Gary for the, the thought time that has gone into practically how the rental registration and licensing ordinance, as well as the storming, this dorm rooming ordinance, would practically go through. I mean, the, going through those exercises and trying to figure out where the roadblocks are gonna be, are gonna save in the implementation in the long run. I've run through a couple of these in different clients, and the more brain time you put in on the front end, the easier it is on the back end. So I, I feel fairly confident that you have a workable piece right now. So I'll work with Mary Ann and Gary in seeing what other changes need to be made in that rooming piece. I do think that it's plausible that that piece can run simultaneously as the rental registration and licensing piece, run those out at the same time, so that we're not leaving a category of rentals out of that, the regulations. Additionally, there is one more policy piece that Gary and I are working through, because again, he brought up a really great point today regarding the applications of some of the codes, that it's better to get it worked out now in the ordinance prior to implementation. He and I'll have that worked out in the next couple days, and so you'll see that amendment in the version that will be presented to you.
Version of the ordinance?
Yes.
For the rental registration and inspection?
Yes.
For first and second reading at the next meeting of council.
We can, yeah.
I, I would like to see it at the, at the next council meeting as first and second reading, and I'm amenable to these two ordinances, the new one and the revised rooming house ordinance, running simultaneously, but I think if the rooming house ordinance slows down... down, I don't want that to slow, I, I don't want it to slow down the rental registration.
How are the single-family homes that Allegheny rents out to students going to be treated?
As a residential rental unit, subject to...
Okay, so if there is a violation of the zoning ordinance discovered, in other words, if there are five residents unrelated by blood, marriage, or operation of law, when the property's inspected, will that be brought to detention and enforced?
Part of the policy discussion that Gary and I are working out right now is how to, to, to set a policy as to how the impact of other ordinances, and finding certain situations like that, will be dealt with. And we're trying to figure out legally how best those are to be dealt with, and whether we need to address that specifically in the ordinance. So, Mr. Roja, I don't have an answer for you as to what that decision will be, it's something that he raised this, Gary raised this afternoon, I haven't had a chance to
I just want to be sure.
Consider. It, it's been, quite frankly, that's a policy issue that needs to be addressed before we give you a final piece.
I'm trying to think of what those would be, and if those could just be considered dorm, like, anything beyond five students in there, if that's a point.
And as we work through it, we can, you know, keep up council updated on things like that. So, I guess the question, not to hold up the rooming ordinance, is Erie charges for their boarding houses, and so dormitories, traditional dormitories, they charge by the room, right, regardless of what that fee is. How would council like us to see, evaluate, for, and to assess a fee? Is that by room, is that by floor? What would council's direction to staff be?
How do we do it now?
They do common areas, when they...
No, 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 I mean, like, how do we do rooming houses, and if...
So, it's a fee of, I think, one-twenty-five per, per, let's say, bed and breakfast. So, and those traditionally have thirteen rooms associated with them. We'd have to address the, the fee itself, based upon this, but just how to evaluate that? Is it by floor, is it by room?
And, and we do it by room, and depending on if there's a kitchen in each, and if there's a, that, like, how does, how does that work? One, one kitchen, when there, there, so if there's more than thirteen rooms, then it's two?
It's whatever, it's whatever's in the house. There's one, one has nine rooms, one has fifteen rooms, two have thirteen rooms, it averages up to thirteen overall. But each house, there's four of them in town, each house is, is charged one-twenty-five, however many rooms there happen to be in it, it, it averages around about thirteen. With the dorms, I'm not sure how many, I've never been in an Allegheny dorm, I don't know how many there are per, per floor, per room, do we do it as an average of, you know, that's the question to council, you know, before councils, how are we going to charge them? How many rooms are going to be in one fee, essentially?
I think for floors comparable.
I think, but it's saying like there's a precedence, like, the floor, but like, again, I don't know either how many rooms are on a floor, like, if there's fifty.
It's like about, no.
Is there a way to just kind of come up with a happy average?
It came from about eight up through forty. That's how much it varies.
Is there, like, if, if, can we do it if the, you know, per floor, there's a kitchen and, on the floor, right? Like, like, I, I don't know, I'm asking, like, you know what I mean, like, I know that shirt's getting hairy, right?
So, I would say it's best to keep it as simple as possible when you do this, so not to evaluate this as a kitchen, this as a bathroom, each floor, and each floor, every other floor, then has a different cost associated with it.
Right, right, right.
It's probably best just to keep it simple.
I would, I would, I guess I would then go with per floor.
Is there a recommendation for floor per room?
I don't...
I mean, if, if your fees need to be directly related to the, the costs that are incurred in, in, I've never been in a dorm either, but if the flux is between eight per floor and forty per floor, I don't know how you...
My guess is that what, how we'll do the evaluation is, this is the amount of time it'll take to inspect one room, multiply that by how many rooms are on a floor, average-wise, that's how we give you a room rate versus a per-floor rate. So, we can present both, and I guess then council could decide it, you know, what that looks like.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Because then we would know, you know, is it eight forty, or is it like, it's like...
We're working with the college on that, yeah.
We're going to have to get the information on how many rooms are per floor and per dorm. I think that's the, that's the way to go.
Yeah.
And to be clear, the fee schedule is adopted separate of the ordinance?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it's, yeah.
And the fee schedule, Tim, I heard you say an annual fee schedule, is that mean just like all of our fees?
It's what we did, yeah, so in January...
But we can update it, right?
That's correct.
If we pass the registration and inspection ordinance first, I need to implement that fee schedule.
You can always do a one-off, if there's a new fee that is to be charged, but it would be wrapped into your annual, so that you don't miss it.
Yeah, you can amend the fee schedule at any time, we, in January, we will adopt the entirety of the fee schedule for that year, so...
So, we move forward on further exploration of room versus floor structure.
And then, and, and we're moving forward with the rental inspection program.
She knows.
Okay. So, that's one good. Now, ratified signatures, licensing agreement between the city and Meville, Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, for the use of PDP trademarked light-up night.
So, for as long as I can remember, and I double-checked on it with multiple people, that the city has used light-up night as their annual Christmas kickoff.
Right.
It's come to the Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, that the city uses this language, they have trademarked it. So, in order to be able to use light-up night, the city needs to enter into a license agreement, which I already did, because it was due on the eleventh. So, in, it's a hundred dollars to use that and the logo, the logo is beyond any marketing, we've kind of addressed that already, I just need council to ratify that, and in the future, we will look to hopefully do something different in Tara's name, is concerned.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
I'm not calling it light-up night.
Throw that into the cat.
Okay, and, trademark. It used to be, I will say, the chamber, when, the Chamber used to call it light-up Meville, because of it has always been trademarked, and I think that over time, I, I think that over time, advertising has been decentralized from the Chamber to other entities, and it is colloquially light-up night. And Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership has a very creative financing apparatus here. We should trademark something, that's what I'm saying.
That's what I said, just, just whatever we decide.
That's how we fix our deficit.
Let's trademark it.
Trademark it.
Let's trademark it all.
A word budget or something.
Some word, uh...
Okay, so, any more discussion? I, sorry, just this year. Yes, we're just, we're not this year.
It's not the better, because everything's already...
Yeah, it's already, right.
Not again.
Right. We're called.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye with a breath.
Kinder?
Aye. I didn't see any public comment on, on agenda items. Councilmember statements? Uh, Jim?
Well, we won't see you until after Thanksgiving, so have a great holiday, everybody.
Thank you to everyone who's still here and who came. I have to say that this was a really emotional night for me, it was good to hear from people whose voices you haven't been heard, and I'm so thankful that you guys were brave and strong, and, and just thank you so much for showing up, and letting me represent you. So, thank you.
Larry?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone for showing up. I'd really like to thank the ones that went out and did that petitioning, to get the rental registration program going. I'm just, I'm happy, I'm really happy, because like everybody said, we know people deserve safe and affordable housing. We ran on that, I, I stand behind it, now it's time to, we have other things on that we ran on that, it's time for us to bring those to fruition. And I'd like to thank Mary Ann and, and staff for everything that they've done, you guys are really doing a good job getting things together, keeping us updated with anything from insurance to what all you're doing, I'm really impressed by all you guys are doing. And I, I want to say thank you to all. And Thanksgiving's around the corner, everybody enjoy, but be safe, we're going to, it's supposed to be getting a snowstorm, so just, you know, be safe.
Yeah, I echo the thanks that Gretchen, and very eloquent we shared, and Larry too. It is, it is really meaningful to have, to have folks come and, and speak, especially, right, it's been a hard process so far, we're hearing from a lot of people very loudly, from lots of different sides, and so it's, it's, it's very hard to, to hear from folks tonight, a reminder, right, of, of why we've stuck it out, and, and why we've continued to fight for safe housing for folks in, in Meville, even when like on some nights, it doesn't seem as popular as it does tonight. Tonight seems like everyone loves it, so why is this been so hard? But I do appreciate staff's work to, to get this prepared and, and ready, I'm excited to get, to, to maybe vote, this time we come together on it, after a long, a long while. And, yeah, just really appreciate, like, Gretchen said, the bravery that folks shared tonight, coming out and speaking, and I hope that you'll come back, and I hope that you'll participate in the budget survey, right? Like, the one piece of, of what we ran on was, was safe housing, and maybe even affordable housing, someday we'll work towards that too, but also, like, involving people in, in, in the work of the city, and, and making decisions that affect us all, we've been working on that all year, and I hope you'll come back and continue to be part of that. Happy Thanksgiving. We also, I don't think we'll see folks until after light-up night either. Light-up night, light-up night, light-up night, I can say many times, we're paying for it. And it's like, it's a really beautiful, magical time in Meville, it is one of the best nights, and I hope the folks just get to come out and enjoy this wonderful place that we live in, and our beautiful neighbors, and our loving hometown. And, that's what I have. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah. I want to apologize to everybody, because I wasn't here last meeting, I was sick, that happens sometimes, and I did want to say that very clearly, that poverty is not a character flaw, right? Poverty doesn't mean that we don't get, get to be heard, right? And I think that the behavior of following people because they are poor, of thinking their voices don't get to be heard because they are poor, is something that we need to make sure that we, it, it's not acceptable, right? And the best, the best woman that I've ever known was poor, and how dare we normalize the attack on poverty, how dare we normalize harassment and, and intimidation to the poor? And their voice is as important as anyone else, and I need to say this very clearly, it is unacceptable behavior, and we will no longer accept it, right? The people here in Meville deserve to be heard, they deserve to be safe, and they are valued, and we want them here, and how much you make does not, obviously, it does not, it is not a judge of your character, and it is unacceptable. And I applaud anyone that stood up here, I applaud anyone that is willing to find their joy in town, especially when they can't afford it, and they have so many hard hurdles. So, again, I'm appalled at what we've gotten used to, I'm appalled at, at what we, we have accepted, and I'm appalled at what we let stand here in Meville, and we need to change it, and in that same breath, it is the time for giving, so let's remember our neighbors, let's remember who's out there, and if they are poor, and they do need us, we need to stand up for them, we need to let our voices be heard, and we need to speak up for them, right? Because, because that's what we do as neighbors, and that's what we do living in Meville, and because we are better, right? We are better together, and I am happy to live here, I am happy to be poor, and I am so happy, oh, well, I'd rather not be poor, but whatever, but I am happy to stand with those people that are poor, okay? And, and I am happy to, to be here in Meville, standing up with you guys, and listening to you, and fighting for you, and so, thank you, everybody, for doing the work, thank everybody for giving these people a voice, and let's keep giving them the confidence to stand up for themselves, okay? Because it, it, it's not okay, right? And we don't accept it anymore, and we expect better from every single person that lives here, and we are going to plan for those people that live here. So, I applaud everybody, I'm so happy to be working with everybody up here, and I applaud everybody doing the work in the city, so let's hold each other accountable. And with that, I will adjourn.
To executives.
To executives.
For the purpose of real estate.
Oh, wait, before I do that, Mary Ann? Our, our, our giving tree goes up.
Monday at noon.
Monday at noon. So, if you don't want to give to one of the organizations, go on ahead and clip something to the tree, right?
Yep, and we can post on our Facebook page what the items they're looking for are.
Yeah, we want to make sure everybody has mittens, and gloves, and coats, and, and everything, and everybody is warm, and, and has warm feet, so, again, now with that, I have a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion.
Motion. All right, discussion, we're called.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.